Good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting on March twenty-second. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Mr. Cantle.
Here.
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Oh, wow. Awesome.
Yeah.
That's it. That's a good night. I guess I arrived with me.
Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening.
He'll leave us from the invitation.
Heavenly Father, we begin today by thanking you for such a beautiful day that you've given us to live and for being in our presence to help us live it. In that light, Lord, we pause for just a moment to remember the folks in Brussels, Belgium, the many, Lord, who were killed, nearly two hundred that were injured, some of them critically, including, Lord, several Americans. Also want to pray, Lord, for the police officers and firefighters and EMTs still unaccounted for the number that were hurt rushing into the scene. So we remember them tonight, Lord. It could be that this very incident could have been on our homeland. So we remember those we love in Brussels. We thank you, Lord, for the lifestyle that we're able to enjoy in this community, for the great privilege we have to be one in you as we pause and give you thanks. I want to continue to pray, Lord, for Jeremy, Ms. Bush Jost, Mr. Shyland, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Bill Laswell, and a perpetual list, not limited to this one, of those connected to our city family who continue to need your daily care and touch. We pray that you'll bless this session tonight, bless our mayor and councilpersons, our administrators, and all those that day-to-day lead the work of this city, including the boots that are on the ground. Thank you, Lord, for this session. Bless the work that's done here tonight and the decisions that are made, if there be, that you'll be pleased. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. May we have a happy Easter.
Yes, nice Easter.
Again, I'd like to extend a welcome to all of our visitors. And at this time and on the agenda, we always allow prior to each council or getting out of the way of the council, a time for visitors to come forward and share a concern within the city with the city council. Council will not respond, but they may do so later in the agenda. But again, the only thing we do is ask you that you keep your comments for five minutes or quick. Clerk, we're tying you and give us your name and your address. At this time, if there's not any one, excuse me, if there's anyone present who wishes to address the council and they're not on the agenda, please come forward at this time.
I just have one comment.
Sure.
I understand Thursday night, we're going to have a meeting about the sales tax.
That could be one of the projects, one of the subjects.
Okay.
Be on the thirty-first, right?
Yes, that's what I understood. My thing is, it's so important. I think we need to advertise a little bit more just by aggravating somebody I found out about it. So if we could advertise that a little more.
Very good. Thank you. See if we can get that done. Yeah, it's designed to meet your councilperson, but of course, that's always one that could be there. Okay, if there's anyone else that'd like to address the council and you're not on the Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with approval of the minutes. In your council packet was minutes from February twenty-third. And are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from February twenty-third. Any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, thank you. Also in your council packet was minutes from the March eighth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in the second to accept the March eighth minutes. Further discussion there. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. Minutes are approved. We now consider the financial report for the month of February. And Mrs. Holswal is with us this evening. Kathy, if you please run over your notes with us.
Well, February was the first month to record sales tax for 2016, also the first month for motor fuel tax. So our revenues in general fund are increasing. And that was the first draw that I made on the sewer fund direct loan for the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. It went well. We made the reimbursement request. Probably within twelve days, we had the money in the bank. So.
First of many, huh?
Yeah, it was good practice.
Well, we wanted to do one early, one that was kind of simple, just to get, make sure that we knew the process and it was going to flow well.
And we'll be doing those on a monthly basis. Okay? Yes.
Starting now? I mean, you're going to keep going monthly?
Yeah, I started in February. I've sent Marches in, so.
Okay.
They try to get us the pay application sometime after the twentieth of every month.
On the sales tax, how's it compared to last year? Too early, Phil?
Too early, yeah. I never, one month is way too early. Way too early.
You want to give me a general idea?
Nope.
All right. I move for acceptance.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Have a motion in the second to approve the financials for the month of February. Need a further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we need approval for the March eighth council meeting minutes?
The March eighth?
We do.
We do?
I think there's a work, set of work session notes in there.
Oh, there is work session and an approval for the minutes.
Typically, we just.
We read about mine, yeah.
It went by pretty quick.
Yeah.
Mary and.
Wow. Very good. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Looks like Mr. Polston, would you like to address the council, please?
We asked Jeremy to do a look-see at our 516 Market Street property or the old Whiskey Wild building and give us some recommendations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was telling my wife, it's been a while since I've been here. I'm kind of not sure what to think. So soon as Mike gets my presentation ready, we'll get started. Spent some time taking some pictures, got on the roof, did a little walk-around up there.
You were brave, wasn't you?
Saw lots of different things. I think you guys are going to be interested to learn, so.
They don't give you hazard duty pay.
My mom, when she found out about, told me I shouldn't have been up there. But it kind of goes with the job.
That's what moms do.
You guys have seen the front of the building and everything, but I'm going to try and give you a little bit of a look of what it looks like on top, some of the issues that we see on the outside of the building. I did not take pictures or do anything inside the building. I'm just going to show you what I see from the outside. The first picture on the left here, we're looking at the roof. As you can see, there's roof air conditioning units and stuff up there. It's kind of hard to tell from that first picture, but there is a slope in the center of that roof. And if you look towards the back, you can see that it's kind of covered up a little bit. They've put some other membrane on top of it and tried to weight it down. Lots of issues there where water could get in. The second picture, you can see that the cap on top of the front wall, parts of it are missing. One thing that I noticed that I find unusual, the way that membrane, and I could be wrong, but the way that membrane is attached to the roof is not right. You can see where water can puddle in on the left side of it on the second picture. Instead of it being flat against the wall, it kind of runs at a slope. And I guess maybe they did that so that the water would try and run off of it. But to me, that looks like a spot that if we had heavy hail like what we had a few years ago, it could easily poke a hole in that membrane. The picture on the top left here is actually, and I apologize, I didn't put anything down to gauge the size of it, but that particular hole that you're looking at is about the size of my fist. The second picture on the top on the right is a screw that's coming through the roof. We saw lots of those up there, and so we tried to be careful where we walked as not to cause Clay another headache in another part of the building. The lower-left picture is part of the back of the building. You can see that a lot of the vines and stuff have grown up into the membrane. And at a closer look on the right side on the bottom is a picture of one of the gaps that we're seeing in the membrane. I could probably lay my arm down in that gap. When I looked a little bit closer at those, you could see underneath the membrane, underneath the membrane, the insulation and different stuff that's under there, it's just, it's nasty. One thing I can tell you, and I won't say how much I weigh, but I walked across that roof and you could hear the water squishing underneath that membrane. The next thing we looked at was what it would cost to replace that roof. And we got two verbal quotes, and I was, I did not change the word concrete here, and in one other spot, I just realized. But I'll make a joke of it when you're working with stuff like this to correct. Word would probably be firm. Matt liked puns, and so concrete would not be a good word to use there. But these quotes, we had twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars just to replace the roof. And one thing I would like to point out.
Jeremy, is that a flat roof replacement?
Mm-hmm. One thing that I'm looking at on that is we have no idea what those trusses look like underneath that membrane. We don't know exactly how long the water's been going through there. I don't know how long Clay's used the building. If those have to be replaced, it could possibly be more. But I have another problem with that, and I'll show you on the next slide. Actually, I got ahead of myself. But we don't know what the trusses look like. If they have to be replaced, there's another concern. We have to have something sturdy to attach those trusses to. We did another roof on one of the city buildings a little while back, and it was hard to get the trusses straight. And we actually had to go down through the old roof and attach it to the wall. Well, here, we can't attach anything to these walls because when you go on, we have a lot of concerns about the brick. My concern would be attaching those trusses to the brick. I think it would be dangerous at that point. I don't know that they would hold. I'm not sure. I'm not an engineer, and I haven't seen what those trusses look like. Speaking on the brick, it's very loose. If you look on the far-right picture, you can see that's the front corner on the south, I'm going to say southwest, corner of the building. It's kind of leaning, and that's basically what's over your windows and doors. It's kind of leaning out a little bit. If you look at the middle picture, that is the southeast corner of the building. It's kind of hard to tell from that picture, but it does lean in a little bit. And I will tell you that on the bottom picture, you can kind of see that there's a brick sticking out, trying to fall out. Through that portion of the building, actually, the south wall of the building, back when we probably had the hailstorm somewhere in that timeframe, portion of that wall did come down on the top of that roof. So basically, we're looking, we don't know what the trusses look like. We don't know if we would be able to attach them to this brick. Not sure what the brick would look like on the inside.
Before you move on, is there any danger of any of this brick falling out onto a passerby or a car?
I'm glad you asked. Not on a passerby on the sidewalk, probably not, but this brick was taken out just to the right on the right picture, and we did not have any problem pulling this out. So there's one of your bricks.
Take it down.
So.
Yeah, we're great.
To tuck point, the brick would cost, one company said about forty thousand dollars. And this is a guy that looked at the building back a little over a year ago. And he was just going off the top of his head, about forty thousand dollars. We could have it done in-house. We have a crew that works with brick. But the problem with that is we're not going to be able to use them on anything else for a while. If you remember when they did the tuck point on the Palace Hotel, it took that gentleman a while to do it. You got to clean the brick, you got to get all the dust and the mortar, the old mortar out, put everything back. It could take a little while, especially with the amount of brick that I saw in the building that's loose. Actually, the hole there on that bottom picture is where this brick came from, if that gives you an idea. We looked at issues with the appearance. We could do paint. The awning has extensive damage. You can especially tell when you're going south on Market Street. If you look at the awning, you can see a definite slope to it. We're not sure what's behind the awning. The shingles would need to come off, of course. You can kind of see they're pretty rough. The windows have leaked, and it's caused the boards underneath to rot and kind of warp. We'd have to replace the molding around the windows. We could patch the holes in the front a little better if we had to. Paneling on the front of the building would cost about twenty-six ninety-nine a sheet, and I just made a guess from measurements that I had stepping it off. We'd need at least eleven sheets. The awning could be replaced with shingles or be replaced with metal. The metal would cost about a hundred and sixty bucks. But keep in mind, we don't know what's underneath that awning. When I looked over the top of the roof and looked down at it, I could see an inch, inch and a half gap in portions of that, the flashing that's above the shingles there. And so water's been going down in there for a long time. Basically, what I think of it as, I like stuff in nature, and a hornet's nest is kind of cool to look at. But if you get too close and you get into it, you're going to be in trouble. And that's kind of the way I feel about this, is that the more we do, I don't know where we're going to stop because I don't know what's there. And in working with some of this stuff in the past, we could spend all the money you want to throw at it. The paint, we're looking at about twenty-five gallons. It'd cost about twenty-five ninety-nine a gallon, six hundred and fifty bucks. We may need more depending on the number of coats if we did that. So basically, in a recap, the new roof would cost twenty to twenty-five thousand. Tuck point would be forty thousand. Paint, about six hundred and fifty dollars. The awning, just for the metal, a hundred and sixty bucks. And for wood paneling on the front, about, we'll just say, three hundred bucks. And none of these numbers are firm. You know, it's just something kind of loose. But I want to show you one more slide. We had a guy come in that had recently taken down a building nearby, and it was a building about the same size, and he gauged it from that. He gave me a verbal estimate that it would only take about thirty thousand dollars to take that building down. I don't know what the lot is worth. I know Mr. Vaughn asked me earlier what the lot would be worth without the building, and I did not ask anybody about that. If that's something you want me to investigate, I could do that, or somebody else could do it. But this is about what I have to tell you and what I can show you on it. And that's just what we're seeing on the outside.
Jeremy sounds to me like we need to tear it down and make a parking lot out of it.
Very good.
That's my vote.
We need parking downtown anyway. You know what I mean?
Well, that's everybody, your call. You're the folks that can make that happen.
Well, yeah. You're the one making estimates, so.
That's dangerous.
Make a parking lot there.
Very good.
All right, any other questions?
What was your total amount? Sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars?
Just to do the outside.
And that's what we know.
And I can tell you this, one of the contractors that I talked to, the one that did the estimate for, one estimate for the roof and the tuck point, he said even in looking at it, you might have issues with the foundation. He said probably a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to make that building sound. And granted, I really want to use that number loosely because he did not come and look at it again. This is something he looked at a year ago. I don't want to mislead you. I'm just telling you what I saw. So, Mr. Moore?
Is there a basement in that building?
Yes, there is a basement in that building.
So building a parking lot could get more expensive than.
I did not look at the cost of that.
Well, actually, if there's a basement, you probably, and it's going to be a parking lot, you'd probably put a lot of the brick in the basement.
Of course, that's if the guy that's wanting to take the building down isn't hoping to salvage a lot of that brick.
I can tell you that one of the other city employees made a comment today that it's always nice to have a spot to put Phil. And I'll just.
It's always a nice place to have, put your car, too, when you come downtown.
Mayor, I'd still like to see an estimate on what we think we could get for the lot, and I don't think we need to make a hasty decision.
No.
Decide something tonight, and let's hold it over to the next council.
All right.
You have any chance to get a passwoman on that lot?
Are we still using the interior of it?
Yes.
For now. I'm concerned about the safety of it, the way it looks. I mean, I haven't been into it. You've been into it recently.
Yes.
Clay, you've been using it a lot. What's the?
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Very good.
We use it for the youth wrestling, some gymnastics programs, and some cheerleading programs. We probably have people in there six to seven months out of the year. It leaks very badly. If we were to have it rain tonight, I'd have to probably go up there and put about ten buckets out just to catch all the rain. So it's, roof is in bad shape. Structurally, our last engineer looked at it several times. He didn't feel like it was not safe. So he allowed us to continue to use it. We do have some use for it. It's not the best building in the world, but we are making some use out of it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Clay.
Maybe by next council meeting, we can come up with some additional estimates on the property value if it was gone, and maybe we can firm up a couple, get a couple more estimates on various aspects that we were just discussing tonight. And Mike, not that you're not doing an awesome job, but Jeremy, it's nice having you back.
Come on, Mike.
Riding the bike.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Jeremy? Very good. We'll move on to further unfinished business. Second item on unfinished business is an update from the Chamber of Commerce.
Ms. Tim.
Ms. Patrick is with us. Tamara, welcome. Look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening. How are y'all today?
Good evening.
Thank you so much for having us tonight to give a report on what's going on at the Chamber of Commerce. I'll try to be brief but very thorough as well. First of all, the merger with the Chamber, the Fulton Area Development Corporation, the SMIC, is complete. I think all of the pieces that needed to be done to make that merger complete are finally finished. Bruce Hackman is acting as our Economic Development Director. Majestly Allison is doing our membership and marketing, and Tracy Smith is doing our financial administrator role at the Chamber. So we have lots of very exciting things that have been happening over the last couple of months, and I know I'm a couple of weeks early on giving my report, and I thank y'all for letting me come tonight. First of all, we have now login and passwords for all of our Chamber members on our website. This will enable them to utilize our website for their businesses to post hot deals, job postings, and events. Also, we're better utilizing our Facebook, and we have a new Twitter account that we are following lots of folks, including the City of Fulton, on our Twitter account. We have joined the Missouri Chamber of Commerce, which enables us to utilize the Missouri Chamber Federation program. And what this is, is a first-dollar program for new business owners. Once they get that first dollar that they made in their business, they fill out a little application thing, talk it about themselves, they give us the first dollar. We send it into the Missouri State Chamber, and they have the first dollar actually framed for them so we can present that first dollar to them. So that's kind of a really cool new feature. Also, we had a TV commercial talking about our communities, which aired through the month of January on KOMU, and it just highlighted all of the cities that fall under the Callaway Chamber of Commerce. I didn't actually get to see it, but everybody that saw it, so it was really great. It started on January first and ran through the thirty-first. Membership retention is currently underway. We are going out and visiting the members. Our goal for 2016 is to walk in every member's door by the end of the year. At the same time, while we're doing that, we're issuing new membership plaques and decals to all of those members as well. We're hosting educational classes throughout the year. We have a goal for the end of the year, which I believe is twenty. So far, we've had five year-to-date, and I'm working on getting a few more of those scheduled in the coming weeks. We do have two new committees that will fall underneath the Chamber. One of them is a Governmental Affairs Committee that will look at state and federal issues that could affect our communities. And I know that that is something that is important to y'all so that we can keep your abreast of what's happening. We also are going to have a healthcare committee, and this is to help us build the healthcare in this community and educate our businesses and the employees on the challenges that they may face in Callaway County. Also, still working on revamping the Leadership Callaway County program. Lots of good ideas. That is scheduled, will start accepting applications by June first, and classes will, the first class will be in September. So I'm really excited about the Leadership Callaway County because we really want this to be revitalized and people be eager to participate in this. We do have a new website that is going to be up and live around the middle of May, and this will have not only the Chamber, but the economic development portion and our entrepreneurial and education portion on our website. It's looking great. I saw it today. Alex with William Woods University is an intern down there working on this new website, and it looks, it looks awesome. She's doing a great job. We also are having some new networking and marketing programs that we're offering, Business Breakfast, and the first one is going to be held on Wednesday, April twentieth. We have First Thursday, Business to Business Luncheon, and that first one's going to be held on Thursday, April seventh. And these are just networking and marketing opportunities for business owners. And we will encourage people that, even though they're not a Chamber member, to come and try these to see if that assists them with their businesses, if it's something for them.
Where will that be held then?
It's going to be at the Chamber. Also, we're going to do an entrepreneur showcase and a pitch competition, and we're scheduling that for the end of October. Have not found the location for that yet, but we may do it at the Chamber. It just depends on if we have another location that comes available to us. New prospective membership packet has been created, and I've provided you each with one of those, and I'm not going to go through the entire packet. But we are going out in the communities and planting those seeds to get people to join the Chamber. In the new membership packets, Majestly has already distributed over sixty of those, and we've had twenty-one new members since the first of January. So things are looking good. People are really talking about the Chamber and are excited about it. She actually made contact with one individual that has, owns three businesses in Fulton, and his response was, you know, I want to have some time to think about this. And he called her back a couple of days later, and he said, you know, I've been talking to some other business owners in the community, and yes, I want to join. I want to join with all three of my businesses because I hear that good things are happening in this community. So that's wonderful news for us. So just take your time whenever you have time to look through that new members packet, and if you have any ideas or suggestions, feel free to send them my way. We also have a new members packet, and I didn't give you all one of these, but we do have a new decal and a new plaque that we provide them along with some special deals from our businesses. They can put a twenty percent off or get a free cookie or whatever they want to give to the new business owners, and that's distributed to them once they join the Chamber. Also, we have some information about economic development, and just a few things I want to kind of highlight. As y'all are well aware, Retail Coach was here, and the Chamber has been working as a liaison for both Fulton and Holt Summit in that matter. So in February, the Chamber scheduled more than a dozen stakeholder meetings and interviews for Walker while he was here. He's actually putting all that information together, and we should have that back to us in May or June timeframe. And that's when both of the communities will have the opportunity to kind of go through the list and kind of rank what the retailers and the retail prospects that they think that they'd like to see try to come to this community. The Fulton New Business Development Program, the Chamber and the Fulton Brick District is launching a new business development advertising campaign with Zimmer Radio Group in mid-Missouri. And during the months of April, May, and June, over two hundred promos will run encouraging encouraging business entrepreneurs throughout mid-Missouri to submit applications with their business plans. And those will actually go to Zimmer Radio, and then they'll be turned over to the Chamber. And that's for them to start up businesses in Fulton. The applicants will be judged by the Chamber and by the Brick District Group. And then the winner of that will receive $1,000 in local incentives to help them start with their startup costs and one month free marketing from the Zimmer Radio Group. So that's something that's kind of cool, and it has been tried in other cities around this area. The Brick District Open House that took place last fall on the Brick's fundraiser actually was an opportunity for a new business to come in. They actually toured the Brick District and saw the vacant buildings. And that is where, I can't even pronounce it, the Poe Boys Restaurant came from as a direct result of that open house that took place. So that was an awesome idea.
I think it's Fontenot, wasn't it?
Fontenot? Fontenot? Yeah.
Fontenot.
I can't pronounce it. Commercial prospects. You know, we have a lot of prospects that we work with and we talk with. And, you know, commercial and industry prospects, sometimes you may hear from them one day, and then three years later, they pop back up and say, "Okay, we're ready to have a conversation." Right now, we have about 17 active business prospects, ranging from restaurants to, you know, professional offices, service centers, industry that we've been working with. Also, there has been three sales tax generating businesses that have applied for the city's electric utility refund program, which is something that you guys did recently, and we really appreciate that. We believe that approximately 26,000 square feet of previously vacant commercial space has been filled since then, beginning of the year. Fulton Fitness, the Poe Boys, Remade for Purpose, K&amp;M Trading Post, Tangled Salon, and then, of course, the Playhouse Beach Stroth, which is, there's still work going on there. And there is also some other agreements that are in place to fill some additional space. One Canoe 2 is taking the Farmers Mutual Building. And right now, they're taking One Canoe 2. They're taking that, but they will be actually in the old Chamber building for a while, while they redo the old Farmers Mutual. And this is something that is very, very exciting. It's going to be great for the Brick District and for Fulton. Also, Mojo's Barbecue and Grill is going into the former Huddle House. And met with that gentleman the other day. And then we have the Fuller Jewelry that will be reopening in Fulton after about a four-year absence. So we have several other potential businesses that are coming in. I actually met with one today. Bruce is gone to meet with some consultants in Chicago. So I met with them this afternoon and showed them some property that we have available. One great thing that we've worked on since the beginning of the year with economic development is we have a whole list with pictures and the square footage of all of the available vacant buildings in the community. So I can pull that list up, and I can show them even in Bruce's absence. I mean, Teresa could do it, Majestly could do it, anybody could really do that, and that's fabulous. I had another lady that called me on the phone and said, "Hey, I want to be in the downtown area of Fulton. Do you have any property?" So I was able to take that list, combine only for the Brick District, the downtown area, and I emailed it to her, gave her the information for Bruce for whenever he comes back. So, you know, we're doing some really great things. Any questions?
Jeremy, anything going in the old Chamber office yet?
One Canoe 2 is going in there right now.
That's where they're going? I thought they were going. Oh, they're going in there temporarily.
Yes, for probably about six months while they do renovation.
And what did you say was going into the Huddle House?
It's Mojo's Barbecue and Grill.
Okay.
Yes.
Cool. Thank you. Very good. Very exciting stuff.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't say Steve.
That's all right. Is there any talk to the Brick District or the downtown merchants? Because the complaints that I hear is that, could they still be later than 12 o'clock on Saturdays?
I think that's an ongoing discussion with the Brick District.
But it has been?
Yes, that discussion has taken place.
I'll tell you what, I mean, it's a lot longer than it is. Here, here, Mr. Moore. Not by me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Let's move on to new business. And Melody Seeger is with us. Good evening, Melanie.
Good evening. I'm Melody Seeger. I'm with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Many of you remember me from five years ago, when I first came and asked you for permission to have the first Out of the Darkness Walk here in Fulton, Missouri. With great excitement, we're here doing our fifth walk. And we're wanting to have it at the Memorial Park this year due to the construction that's going on at the Fulton State Hospital. That's exciting stuff that's going on over there. But unfortunately, with all the construction, we're not able to put our walkers through all of that. So we're asking for permission to waive the fees of the park this year in order for us to have the event at the park. Just to let you know what some of the funds go that we raise with our walks each year. We are able to put more than SAB program in area schools. We offer mental health first aid training to community members for free. We have sent advocates to Washington DC to advocate for mental health laws and suicide prevention laws that deal with veterans. Most recently, we have been in Jefferson City, and we are actively advocating for a suicide prevention bill that will either require or mandate that students and educators require two hours of suicide prevention education training every two years. We're hoping at the end of this session that that will pass successfully. So far, it's met with no opposals. So we are very positive that some version of that bill is going to pass this legislative session. So that's some of what we've done with the money that we've raised. We have also put assist trainings in community members. We have offered International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day to those who've lost loved ones to suicide here in Fulton, Missouri, and we continue to do outreach programs here in Fulton.
Remember that we waived those fees?
Second.
Thank you for doing what you can.
And if we could ask Mr. Benton again to do a proclamation in September and work with Courtney on that, if at all possible.
She'll make sure I'm there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Have we checked, is the pavilion available on that date?
I've already signed the paperwork and have that. They're just waiting for you guys to waive the fees as to whether or not I need to pay the fees or not pay the fees. So they're holding the paperwork, and as long as you guys have waived the fees and that's okay, then the park is ours. And we're working with Chief Myers again on the route and safety procedures for that, as well as the ambulance system, just like we've done in the past. And just to add to that, the police department's always been excellent in helping us. Even when they've told us they were busy, I can tell you that they've stopped and helped our walkers across, which, you know, they don't get a lot of recognition for the great things that they do in our community. I just want to point that out, that on days whenever our walkers maybe are having a little bit of a difficult time getting through, you know, it's a moving walk, but sometimes it's a struggle for them to walk that 3.5 miles to let them know that they're stopping and helping our walkers through is a great thing. So I do appreciate Chief Myers and his police department for helping us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a motion. Did I get a second on that?
Yes, second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second to waive the fees for Memorial Park and authorize this event. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Looks like we're going to have the suicide walk. We'll see you in September. Thank you. Our next item of new business is a request from Fulton Country Club. We're going to shoot off fireworks in July, maybe. Looks like Mr. Larue is with us this evening. Welcome, sir.
Charlie's supposed to be here, but it was his turn to buy at Lulu's, so he didn't show up.
There you go.
As you're aware, that I'm here representing the Community Fireworks, and each year, that display takes place at the Country Club. There are approximately 30 merchants or business people that contribute to that fund. And each year, the city has contributed also. We solicit half, and the city has participated by donating half. This year, it is the same as last year. It was $4,900. We had a 964 shell show, which I don't know if you got to see it last year. It really was a nice presentation. We get an 8% discount, and this year, we get an additional 15% in fireworks if we pay for them by April the 25th. The company is J&amp;B Fireworks. They're out of Iowa. Do an excellent job. They come down and dig the mortar pits, set up the display. And then approximately 9:30 or so, the pyrotechnician shoot those fireworks for us. We carry insurance. They provide insurance. We have the City of Fulton, as says, additional insured. The City of Fulton, its employees, volunteers, officers, elected officials, partners, subsidiaries, divisions, and affiliates, event sponsors, and landowners are covered in this. And that is a million-dollar coverage for the show. And that is, as I said, for each occurrence. There is also some other liabilities. $500,000 for damage to vehicles or something like that. Anyway, they do an excellent job. Then, we always run an ad. It says, "The City of Fulton and the Fulton Country Club Fireworks, and the following sponsors participate." So I guess we would like to see the city participate once again at half the price. I think that's $2,450.
Very good.
Have any questions?
Any questions? Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Very good. Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to authorize the $2,450 to support the Country Club in shooting of the fireworks. So there's not any further discussion. I call for a question. Where are we going to pull that from?
Council's discretionary.
That's what we thought it was coming from.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, we did put it in the budget. Put it in the budget this year. I don't remember what the amount was. I think it was $15,000. Pretty close. Yeah. Close. Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, all of the favor of authorizing funding for this event, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. We definitely appreciate y'all's efforts, and I know it's a big job, so thank you.
It was a good show last year, too.
It was. Looks like Mrs. Ann Johnson's with us this evening. Our next item of business was Fulton Housing Authority, and we'll talk about some police services here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here to request approval of a contact between the Fulton Housing Authority and the City of Fulton Police Department for additional services for public housing. I've been here three years, and Steve, you might have a better idea how long this is going on. 15, somewhere on that, I'm guessing. Oh, I'm sorry. How long have we been doing the contract with housing and the police department?
Probably something like, maybe?
Long time.
It's very beneficial for the housing, and I hope for the police department as well. It's a great partnership. We have three excellent officers that work with us. Officer Mental, Officer Kramer, and Lieutenant Ladwig. The other officers are great, but this is our points of contact. We provide cell phones for those three officers to carry that are housing numbers that our tenants are given. So if they have items they'd like to report and don't want everyone to know about, they can kind of help that way. We definitely have a zero tolerance with drugs and those kinds of things. And we have worked together to probably 15 or 20 families where we had drugs actually and our property are gone and no longer there. So we're working really hard to keep that safe. The officers, there's one addition in the contract for this year, otherwise it's pretty much the same. We've worked through the Highway Patrol. We fingerprint people when there is a question on their background. The only way to definitively know that they've done that is through a fingerprint check. And tenants and applicants are now able to do that here in Fulton instead of having to travel to Jeff City. We pay for the cost of that, but it's a closer place for them to be able to go. Transportation is definitely an issue for our families. The contract is again for $31,200 or $2,600 a month that we pay for these additional services for housing property. And one of the officers lives on property, and so he's able to play outside with his kids and the kids that are on, you know, our residence, children as well, making it be someone that they know they can talk to the police, and it's not a scary person, so.
I recommend approval. Second.
Mary, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. How do you pick the officer? How do you know which officer is that lives over there? Is there a random? Do you do this? How often do you change officers?
This is in a rental house that we have. And so the officer just, you know, applied to live there just like anyone would.
Okay, I see. Okay. Great, thank you.
We know about overall, how do we pick?
It's an assignment.
Yeah, so is it an assignment, or is it something? How do you pick the officer that's going to get to live there? I didn't know specifically.
I try to pick the officers with really good dispositions and really good with people and good people skills. And we've had some to pass that weren't, and they weren't there very long. But I think we've got a good group right now.
Very much.
I do have one that I am also looking at training that in the future, if we need another one, if one of these moves on or whatever, we still have someone that we can fill in with. And I think she's going to do very well.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Going back a little bit further, I'm like dating myself, but Kenny Harwin and his tap dance and ballet again. We missed this show. The officer, the lady.
The officer that did the dancing. That was steep.
It was a good show, though. They did a good performance.
I don't have control over everything. But it did go over.
And I was surprised. I mean, you, he got involved.
Part of our budget, we allow for the city to burden part of that cost, don't we?
Yeah, it's built in. And there's a resolution later on the agenda for this.
It's in the budget.
Yeah.
Again, the officers are wonderful, and thank you for the relationship that we've been able to develop over the years.
I think it's been very good, and I think it's extremely important because we have had, years and years ago, back in the early 2000s, we had some really bad drug issues in our housing. And starting in 2003, I think we started addressing those issues. And I think it's really good now. We have a very good working relationship. If my officers find a situation that needs to be addressed and addresses it immediately, and so it helps my people out as well as our residents as well in trying to keep that area safe, which we absolutely promise we can.
Very good. Thank you. Very good program.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll now move on to item D, and Seeger from YMC is with us this evening. Looks like we're going to Iken Bike, so you probably don't say it that fast.
That's exactly what you said. Hi, my name is Nancy Hanson, and I am working as a host for the Iken Bike Camp. And I'm not sure if you've heard a whole lot about it, but it's a really unique opportunity for individuals with disabilities.
opportunity for individuals with disabilities, uh, to come to camp and learn how to ride a bike independently. Um, and the neat thing about this camp we're gonna have in Fulton, um, in June is that it is the only one in central Missouri. I took my daughter last summer. We had to travel to St. Louis, um, every day for a week so that she could learn how to ride a bike and it was the most joyful, magical week ever, 'cause I, I really didn't think it was possible for her to be able to do it and, um, and she was. And, uh, so I prayed about it for a long time and decided that I'd really like to bring this opportunity here so that more people with disabilities would learn how to ride a bike and, and it's just, it's just a happy event. So, um, so we're doing lots of fundraising and that's going really well. And Melissa with the YMCA is working on having a Bike-A-Thon, um, in, in May, so I'll.
Nancy approached the Ys, um, probably about six months ago with this idea and needed a location and we were luckily, um, able to provide her, um, with our gymnasium for one, for five days. We're gonna displace our summer camp to allow these campers to come in and have this opportunity. Um, so the Bike-A-Thon is one of the thing, one of our fundraisers that we're going to do, not just to raise money, to help sponsor the children coming to the camp, but to bring awareness to the community of the need so that we can have camps in the future. Um, the Bike-A-Thon is scheduled for May seventh and we are going to use mo- most of the Sensing Creek Trail. We were hoping to use, um, more of Wood Street, but the construction at State Hospital is also disrupting our event. So, um, we are doing a little bit more with Veterans Park. Spoke with Chief Myers, um, la- last week about our route because it does have to cross O and he seemed that he'd be able to provide us with an officer with that if we were able to marshal the rest of the route. So, we're basically just here tonight to get your blessing on the route that we've chosen, um, to use the great trail that we have to help fully promote our event as well. So, any questions?
Me as usual. Um, is there any way we could avoid it? I'm really concerned about that route O crossing. Is it possible we could get off the trail earlier so we could just completely avoid it? It looks like there's four, but I think most of them are on the trail.
I looked at other spots to come off of the trail and the, the issue with that is we're always gonna have another street to cross or we'd have to shorten our route. The route right now is about eight miles, which is not very long for a bike route. Um, and the, the thought then, and I kinda discussed this with Chief Myers, is route O is not the ideal place, but this is also on a Saturday morning, so we have limited traffic in that area and then the streets that we would use to get to Veterans Park are very lightly traveled. Every place else would get us closer to the roundabout or the parks that might be a little bit more traffic down on Saturday morning, um, in and out of downtown. And since it's not a race, it's okay that they have to wait to cross the street. And so, you know, if they have to wait for a bundle to get, we don't have to worry about constantly crossing the streets and it's not like a timed race or anything.
Right, okay.
Isn't that a Saturday morning at that time is probably not that bad?
That's, that's what we're hoping.
Right.
If there's parents that are there with young children who do not wanna cross the street, they can turn around and go back at that point.
Should we just consider temporarily closing it too? Just, I'll leave that to Chief Myers, but that's my concern.
Motion to approve.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in second to approve the, the I can bike camp, uh, excuse me, the, the parade.
Bike-A-Thon.
Bike-A-Thon, thank you. Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
A little guilty.
I'd just like to thank, Nancy, this is awesome. You've taken a hold of this and I've watched you go through it and congratulations, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Sound like a great event.
Yeah.
Item number nine is a time for, uh, council to bring any concerns that they've, uh, had brought to them within or out in the community and, uh, or any con- concern that they'd like to address, uh, and I'll just throw the floor open. Council has anything? Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
Now, Mr. Mayor, now I'm not picking on Mr. Hudson, but it's my time of the year coming up again. And I asked back long ago about work sessions and, and I'm just wondering, know if you're gonna take a more progressive approach on yards this year when people complain to us?
Well, sir, I think we were pretty successful last year. I don't see us changing a whole lot. We, we prosecuted a few folks last year. Uh, hopefully we'll have less this year. Maybe those folks will cooperate a little bit better, but I, I think we were pretty successful last year and outside of what we're already doing, I really don't know much more than we could do.
Well, can we have in the newsletter that we will, uh, make new citation or something to remind them?
We can put stuff in the newsletter, absolutely.
Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question for Lance also. Uh, how are we doing on demolishing homes and are, are we moving forward with these?
We're being pretty successful. We've gotten, uh, three or four total taken down in the last three or four months. And I also, I have some applications laying on my desk now for different places in town.
Good.
So, uh, that's, that's beginning to come around a little. People are beginning to see that we need to do that.
Good. Thank you, Lance. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, I have one also.
Thank you.
The house on Bluff Street.
What about the house on Bluff?
With all the...
The, the guy's working on that house. That, part of that stuff laying back there is construction stuff. He's, he's redoing the interior of that house and plans to move there.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you. I have another item, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, um, the, the traffic signal at Bluff and St. Louis, up here on the north, north end.
Okay.
I'm, I'm wondering where the loop is where to turn the signal green for people traveling south on Bluff that wanna, you know, go straight across or make a left? Because I've noted many times when I'm approaching that intersection that, that light'll turn green when there's nobody sitting, sitting there to, to make that straight on. And I'm thinking what's happening is people are cutting the corner when they're making the left to go north. So I'm wondering if we could look at where the loop is and maybe move it or, I don't know, what, what could be done there? That, you know, the trips have changed? Cause it, many times I've seen it changing. There's nobody there from either direction wanting to go. Is that making any sense, Mr. Johnson?
Sure.
Kyle's not here tonight.
I've, I've noticed, uh, in the DOA report that he checks those, um, lights periodically or quite often actually, at least once a week.
When I saw that too.
Well, thank you. And, uh, I've talked to him about that particular light, cause I've had similar complaints.
Okay.
He says it's operating okay, so I, I don't know anymore now. But we'll, we'll continue with, we'll bug him again.
I'll try to catch up to him when he gets back.
Yeah, that's...
In the office. Oh, thank you.
Well, um, before Lee, I don't see Daryl active, but I was gonna say, all the lights burn on Martin Luther King Drive now, thank you administration.
They do, definitely.
And Daryl's all here to hear this.
I have one more question for Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, Bill, we had at the corner there, St. Louis and, and Bluff, there's a pole that's got all the wires and everything hanging out of it and I think I, I mentioned it to you the other day. Do, it belongs to one of the cable companies. It's fell, fell over or it's been pushed over and there's wires exposed.
It's a, it's a telephone box.
Okay, so it's not dangerous for anybody to, cause the wire...
And they've been, I passed it on for that, for them to be contacted.
Okay.
I don't know if it's still, does it still lay in?
It wa- it was today and I took my granddaughter to school.
Oh, you know.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
While we're on the intersection, at night it's pretty dark if the businesses there turn off their parking lot lights, so I don't, we may wanna look at that too, for more streetlight, more streetlights. I'm not sure why they're turning off their parking lot lights, but they do.
Where did you say that was?
Bluff and St. Louis Auto Zone, they're the ones that turn their lights off and it's pretty dark on that, at that intersection at night after they close. Just stay on, just stay home and I won't have a problem with it.
I can't help.
Very good. Anything else?
That I can hear now. Fountain went off, I can hear now.
We'll, uh, move on to resolutions and, uh, looks like we have Resolution thirty-two fifty-one, which has to do with the contract with the housing authority over police services. Uh, Councilwoman Pace Snook, would you please present, uh, Resolution thirty-two fifty-one?
Resolution number three-two-five-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the housing authority of the City of Fulton, Missouri for the provision of supplemental police services. I move that we, uh, pass this resolution at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion in second to authorize Resolution thirty-two fifty-one. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Does anyone need a break? Okay, very good.
No.
No, sir. Okay, we'll continue on. If you do, just raise your hand to get my attention somehow. We'll move on to, uh, first reading ordinances. Uh, last, uh, meeting, we had ordinance fourteen forty-six, which was tabled. So if you want to, uh, uh, consider that ordinance again, we would need to, uh, take it off the table, uh, Councilman Vaughn, or who put it on?
Uh, I might motion that we can leave it on the table.
Leave it on the table. Okay, very good. Gives us more time to check it out. Okay.
I think because it's already on the table, if we don't take, and I'm, it, it'll just go away and it, and if it come up again, it'll be a brand new ordinance.
Okay, we can bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I read the literature and, you know, I was a little skeptical at first and I think that these are a little bit, a little bit much, but I don't know that it's a bad idea to, to consider, so I was ready to go with it tonight.
I haven't heard any feedback.
I think, I think Daryl brought up the best point and I think the lady from Pace, um, showing me Pace, due to discussions that Courtney and I have had with her, even kinda admitted, because we're a municipally owned utility, it could affect us more than a Jeff City who has, who has Anra.
Okay.
And until we know what the state legislature's going to do with some of the, uh, legislation this, this session, um, I think the city administration is very content on it staying on the table.
Yeah. I think, I think the main thing was is the, the reason it was tabled is because of the opt-out option, that they didn't allow for an opt-out.
Oh, I see.
Without their approval instead of us just opting out.
So, we can have that.
Till that's clarified, I...
Well, we'll bring that up too.
Okay.
Well, then I wanna know what, what liabilities were, but I really didn't see anything that was putting us liable to.
I think pretty much...
What was presented? None?
None, yeah. Okay.
Let it die.
Very good. Our next, uh, ordinance for first reading is an ordinance that, uh, accepts the sanitary sewer improvements of Hales subdivision. And Councilman Shilin, would you please present this ordinance for consideration?
Bill number fourteen forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the Osmond sanitary sewer improvement of Hales subdivision. I move that, uh, going with fourteen forty-seven, we load it on and move to the next regular scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good. We have a motion in the second to, uh, advance Bill number fourteen forty-seven for second reading. Any further discussion of the motion?
Uh, city go, city code requires that if a subdivision's being developed, that the, uh, developer installs sewer and wa, utilities. Um, the sewer was installed to city standards. We cambered the line and we actually found that one of the, um, Ys that was put in for future construction had collapsed during the refilling. The contract, the developer went back in, fixed the Y, we, we checked it out again and we found that everything is now fine. And I, and this, I, last, is there somebody else, somebody else already applying to hook onto it? I think we're already up to maybe two houses or been some discussion that maybe the second house is getting ready to hook up to it. Okay?
The, uh, it's, this property's in the city limits though, right?
Correct. It's Alpha Bartley Lane. It's out there. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of favor of the mo, of the motion, uh, to advance fourteen forty-seven, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. And now considering the monthly reports, Director of Administration, uh, majority of our department heads are with us this evening, so if you have any questions or anything in, in the report, uh, now's a good time to get them answered.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr..
Only one.
Okay.
On page seven, talking about community development block grants. And the, the housing demolition, this project has been suspended?
That's why I've watched it.
What's going on there? Yeah. We kinda touched on this already, but...
Yes, sir. We have suspended that for the time being. There were some other things that came up that Gail needed to work on.
Okay.
And so, uh, I, I don't know that we're gonna get back to it. There, when, when it finally came down to it, we didn't have that many houses that really needed to come down, that we might even get the grant. We could put weeks and weeks and weeks of work in on that and not get the grant.
Well, then we, we have a very good relationship with the state. And that, and part of this, we, we got to block, grant money, take down the old power plant, block grant money, take down the old shoe factory.
Right.
Um, it, it didn't look real good. They wanna, state wants to spread it around a little bit more.
Okay. All right.
We are getting some houses down though, good to see.
Yes.
Some houses are coming down though.
Yep.
We're gonna work, we're gonna work to try to get them down, the, the need to come down.
Thanks, Lance. Yep.
Lance is doing a good job of working with the owners and et cetera, so. Okay, if there's not any other questions, I'll...
Uh, real quickly, page fifty.
Fifty?
Page five-zero?
Yep.
Yes. The, a couple of things. The, the By Street Bridge, I just kinda wanted an update on that. You know, Kyle's not here. How, how we're doing on the deck on that?
I'm, I'm not gonna try and answer that.
Don't know. We've had some decent weather, but, then also sidewalks. What, what are we gonna start doing some of those improvements?
We, well, as you called last year, we took money out of the asphalt to do a temporary crew for the summer.
Uh-huh.
Um, I think the entire summer, they didn't make it halfway around Veterans Park. So, that proved to be not very successful as well. Um, so what we, I don't really know right now, lo, whether we have a sidewalk program or not.
So we've burnt through all that money?
Well...
Actually, if you...
We should have the fifty-fifty, right?
If, yes, we had the fifty-fifty and if you also remember, uh, we told Kyle that as we designate streets to resurface, that we'd also, uh, look at refurbishing the sidewalks on that particular avenue and, and, and our curves. And so that's the way he's approaching this right now.
Well, the Fulton Sun did theirs, right?
Oh, that's beautiful.
Fulton Sun did theirs with the fifty-fifty process. Maybe it's time for another newsletter article since it's now regained the springtime, put something in the newsletter, remind, newsletter. Remind our citizens that that project, that program is available.
Okay.
We'll do that. Is that okay, Mr. Cannon? I didn't mean to step in your way.
No, that, I just...
Good, good, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I need to work.
Right. Anything else in the DOA report?[1737.12]
Move for approval.
Second.
Acceptance, whatever.
Thank you, I have a motion in the second to approve the Director of Administration report for February. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify as saying yes.
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 All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. Looks like the Human Rights Commission had a meeting and they've got an event coming up. Councilman Moore, would you like to address that?
Well, most of that meeting was all based on our luncheon that we have coming up on April the first, awarding the humanitarian of the year. It's from room to one here in our city hall chambers and I would like to invite all the council and administration to attend our luncheon that day. Mayor will be presenting the humanitarian of the year award to the people. That was about most of our meeting, but this year we, as you can see on our flock, we had a pretty good turnout of nominations.
You had, what, seven excellent nominees, so the community really responded to that.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
So, any other questions for Mr. Moore? We'll move on to appointments, I do have an appoint, an appointment this evening I'd like for you to approve is Jeff Stone from here in Fulton to the Historic Preservation Commission.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve Jeff, all those in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no, thank you. Move on to announcements, again, encourage everyone to make it to the polls on Tuesday, April fifth and I guess the next meeting will be some of your, will do a swearing in of the new council. The sixteenth annual clean sweep, again, will be the sixteenth. And again, remind you of the meet and greet that the council is going to have on, on the thirty-first that's being sponsored. For anyone in the community that'd like to come in and visit with the council person.
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately I won't be available that evening.
Well, maybe Mr. Shiloh can do double duty.
There you go.
He can do triple duty, I'm going too.
Okay, the, I do have a need for executive session. It should be sharp, I do not expect any decision-making to be done after that, so. At this point, could I have a motion to adjourn to the executive session?
Second.
Thank you, motion in the second to adjourn to the executive session. Do we need a roll call on that, yes?
Yes. Mr. Shiloh? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Raffle? Mr. Schifferdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Cannel?
Yes.
And council members.
Very good, we'll adjourn to executive session.